Call to order, the Lake Mills City Council meeting for December 16th, 2014. Please rise and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call a roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Grundon?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
Correction and approval of the City Council minutes for December 2nd, 2014. Second, please.
Second.
Betsy, I mean, Misty, would you call a roll?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Correspondents, start with Mrs. Fritz.
Quiet week, nothing here.
Steve?
Same thing, nothing here.
Just a couple small items, it looks like there's some more, we're having problems with speeding out in the Brookstone area, and that's been brought up to the chief again. There was another incident, and I'll just talk briefly about it, about the bicycle group that came forward to us to get the Sherrills painted on the road. There was some concern that some funny business was going on by painting the no-bike signs on the sidewalks, and I just want to put this out there for everybody, that the painting of the no bicycles on the sidewalks was done at the request of the businesses downtown, and it's been planned for some time, so it had nothing to do with the folks that came before us asking for the Sherrills to be painted on the road.
And if I could tag on to that, I've been asked a number of times about whether or not you can walk a bike on the sidewalk, and the answer is yes, you can walk, you can walk your bike across the sidewalk, let's say you're going to Waterhouse Bakery, that's in the, kind of in the middle of the block, so you come up to the curb, you can walk your bike, put it in the bike rack, you just cannot ride the bike on the sidewalks that are marked, that is prohibited.
It's, it's in the downtown area, but you can around the commons, and, yeah, it has to do with pedestrian traffic in the downtown business area, and doors opening, and people exiting, and running in the bikes, so, as you can see, the code has been in place for forty or fifty years.
Right.
So, but it was just an unusual thing, you saw, I give you, Pat put in his request in May.
Yep.
And, and was before we had the request for the Sherrills by substantial amount, so...
Yes.
And there have been signs posted on the downtown sidewalks, no bike riding on the sidewalk, so that, it's been in place for quite a while.
And it isn't just the businesses, it's also pedestrians walking on the sidewalk do not appreciate bikes because they come up really fast behind you, and you don't even see them, and so forth, and, so it isn't just the businesses, it's the citizens as well.
That's all I had.
Yeah, nothing.
The only thing I had was, just piggyback on my side, did get correspondence from a person in Brookstone complaining about the, the traffic, and I got a memo stating that there will be radar put up there to evaluate if there is a problem with speeding, and so, residents of Brookstone, beware, radar is active. That's all I had. Questions and public comments, seeing no one in the audience, we'll close that. City managers' report.
There were a couple items that I wanted to make sure that I brought up. I passed out several memos tonight that are for the next meeting, but they're pretty in-depth, there are a lot of detail to them, so I wanted to make sure you had them in your hands as early as possible to be able to start working on those. So if you have any questions throughout, you know, reading them or looking at them, and you need anything, just give me a call, or send me an email. I want to remind that the council, large term, will be on the ballot for the spring election. Campaign registration statement, nomination papers with one hundred and fifty to one hundred qualified signatures, and the declaration of candidacy must be filed with the clerk no later than 5:00 PM on January 6th, 2015. These forms, instructions can be printed from the GAAP website, which is the Government Accountability Board, or picked up in the clerk's office. A spring election will be held April 7th, and a spring, if a spring primary is required, that will be held on February 17th. Any questions?
I have an unrelated question.
Okay.
It's, it's actually related to the Housing Authority, and then maybe Mrs. Fritsch could help me out, too. Are the, the people, the employees that work there, are they city employees?
No, they are not.
They're not, okay, now that answers that question.
There was a specific email that was sent out from, I think, Betsy, to Steve, indicating that we try and keep as much separation as possible, so, we don't even apply a lot of the general rules that the city has to the Housing Authority, that's pretty much set up by the Housing Authority Board. The, the one thing that we do do is we pay salaries, do we write their checks?
No.
No.
You do not, we do.
Not, no.
Okay.
What, what they do is they, they contact us on a regular basis, asking what our benefits are, what our wage increases are going to be, because that's where the HUD is telling them to get the basis for their increases and their benefits. So they'll, they'll contact me, and it'll probably be Misty in the future, and ask those questions.
Well, the question I had was that in the minutes, they, they referred to a seven percent pay raise, and that, that is, that was out of line with what our, the city employees, so what, are they allowed to?
I, I have a feeling that's between them and HUD.
They're not, they don't fall under the same thing that the city employees do.
Okay.
And also, just so you know, that our director has chosen not to take health insurance, so in lieu of that, the salary went up, in other words, you know, because he has insurance, so it looks bigger than it is, you know, if he, so...
Well, they have no input, that's the way it is.
I, I provided this document in your packet, it's kind of a free floater, I didn't know that if you knew what it was about, that's the appraised value of the Public Works Building at this point in time, and the city, I don't know if you remember, but in the budget for 2014, we had $650,000 set aside to buy the Light and Water portion of the existing building from the Light and Water Utility for Parks, and based on data that I was able to find of a loan taken out in the early nineties, the city paid 55% and the Light and Water paid 45% of the original construction. So we divided the, the value of the building by that, and then paid the Light and Water Utility $450,000. So that's what this document was for. We checked out with Public Service Commission, and they said that was a very adequate approach. Said they'd never heard the question before, but it was an adequate approach.
Sounds like $200,000.
Less than what we had budgeted, yep.
There's another question later tonight where we may talk about that again.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Steve?
No, that's it.
Okay.
I have a quick question, since Rudy brought up the minutes, which I hadn't really thought about in that vein before, but these are the minutes from October, and of the, of Rock Lake Manor, and I'm just trying to remember, I guess, I know we don't have a meeting this month, but I thought we also didn't have a meeting in November, so if we didn't have one in November, these are not approved minutes. Is that possible?
It's possible, we receive them, assuming that they're passed, so if somebody sent them over to us.
I would recommend we table those to the next meeting, instead of putting them on, I don't think they've been approved by our board, now that I think about it. It's for Rudy.
I hear a second.
I'll second it.
I don't think you can do that on, on where we are, but this is just for you, Rudy, when you get to that item.
Okay, so I'll, okay, so you don't think it's...
I don't think we approve that, maybe I'm wrong.
All right, well, I'll just pull it out.
I'd pull it out and put it on the January meeting.
Okay.
And I'll check on that.
Okay, and then just put it in the next agenda.
I'll let staff know if it should go in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I may be wrong, but I think that's right.
All right, brings us to item seven, acceptance of committee minutes, so I have before me the minutes from the Rock Lake Committee of November 4th, 2014, and the Economic Development Commission of July 21st, 2014, they'll go on file as read. No board appointees, is that correct? A miscellaneous license, we have one tavern operator's license application, Misty, could you read that? Is that Catherine?
Caitlin.
Caitlin Dean Sell.
Oh, Caitlin, Sell, okay. Do you hear a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Brings us to item C, this is for the ratification of the police union, WPPA and LEER contract, and this will be motion 14-12-2-1. Misty, would you read that, please?
City council motion 14-12-2-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the Wisconsin Professional Police Association. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the new collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Wisconsin Professional Police Association, contract dated January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2016, copies of which are attached hereto and made a part hereof, is hereby ratified. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to execute said collective bargaining agreement, and to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said collective bargaining agreement. The City Council does hereby approve the new collective bargaining agreement, authorizes the city manager to execute said agreement, and authorize the, the council president to sign the motion.
Discussion?
Summarizing, well, this motion ratifies the agreement between the city and the professional, Wisconsin Professional Police Association here in Lake Mills, it's basically a 1% wage increase, that starts on January 1st, it includes income continuation package that the city is going to join if you approve this, actually with another resolution further down, and that is a cost that the city will pick up. Currently, in this year, and potentially next year, it looks like the premiums are waived, so based on that condition, if the premiums are waived in those years, at the end of the year, and the first week of December, the half percent that would have gone towards the income continuation plan is given as a bonus, so for, here's, for the term of this contract, which are 15 and 16, that would occur. The other package that's in there is the deferred compensation, which has no cost to the city, it's just something that the city has to approve for employees to be able to use the deferred compensation into. Another one is what we negotiated for ourselves, and based on the package that's put before us, is modifications to the sick leave, and we got a reduction in the amount of sick leave that employees can get paid out for, we do pay a little bit more towards it, it still is in our benefit to take, to approve the higher percentages with the less days, it's a calculation, and we, it basically split the initial proposal in half, and so it's about 50/50. There are employees who are grandfathered in, if they're over the existing, which there are a few, but as a whole, this package does a benefit to the city, and in the long run, has a substantial unfunded liability benefit to the city.
Question, Steve, in the memo, it shows an alternate one and two, but that is not a choice we're making, is this the...
The alternate one and two are, are you can approve it, or you can't approve it, and if you approve it, that's alternate one, if you don't approve it, that's alternate two, so, it's not like there are two different contracts, it's just approve it or not approve it, and those are the two alternates. I recommend we approve it, the, the union has ratified it, it's within all our fiscal constraints that actually meets some of our long-term funding issues that we've been trying to take care of for a long time, I think it was 2006 or 2007 was the last time we discussed these issues, and the union just, we made a lot sweeter proposal at that point in time, we were offering them cash upfront, and they turned it down, so this is, this is not a bad deal for us, and these, when you consider our restricted financial times, it's, it's a pretty good deal.
Do we need to make a decision on which alternative we want before we pass the motion?
There are only two alternatives.
I know, but, what I'm saying is you can't have two alternatives in, in the motion.
But if you vote no, you're, you're going with alternate two, if you vote yes, you're going with alternate one.
Right.
That was my question.
Yep, that's basically...
Because it looks like, it does look like in the memo, the way the memo is worded, that there were like two choices.
That's what I thought, too.
And then the third choice would just say no to everything, but it's not that, it's vote yes or vote no.
Yep.
So vote yes is the alternative?
Number one.
One, okay, gotcha.
Rudy, have we make the motion that we approve 141222?
And a second, please?
I'll second it.
Further discussion?
Actually, yeah, no, this, this is a two-year deal, right, and no impact on 2015 budget, and at the end of two years, it can just continue to roll over as long as neither side requests.
No, it has to be reopened.
It does have to be reopened.
Yes.
Okay.
Normally what happens is we get a request, you'll note that in each memo, I note that we received a request from the union to reopen the contract. This one falls within our existing budget, which was, I had to negotiate, I didn't have any choice, that was, the budget was already in place. 2015 is essentially within what was projected in the existing one, and, and I guess, from my opinion, is, is a very good deal for the city. As you know, you get a 1% increase, and then you pay out half percent at the end of the year if there's no income continuation premiums, but they wanted one and a half percent if there was no premiums, but that builds on to the base, and then that's long-term costs that we may not be able to, to afford, and I'd rather negotiate that at the end of two years if the economic conditions are substantially changed rather than now. One of the reasons we went with a two-year contract was because of the health insurance situation could change so substantially in 17 that nobody wants to run a contract that guarantees a certain type of health insurance at that point in time. So, I guess from my position, this contract covers just about every position that we've got as a city, does pay them more, which is good, the employees need to feel valued and paid more, but it still falls within our relatively restricted financial positions. We're not, you know, cutting major programs to be able to give our employees a pay increase.
And with no, no reflection on previous years, this past year, I've heard nothing but kudos for our current police force?
I have a point of clarification, my, maybe my ears are not working well, but I heard motion 141222, we're not on that one, are we?
Two one.
We should be two one.
No, I'm sorry, I flipped it over as two one, thank you.
Yeah, I just thought of clarifying.
For the correction. But all right, flipped over to the Meitner one?
That's okay, that's what I figured.
We do apply this to all employees, so even though it's negotiated by the police, it's across the board.
Call a roll.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Item D, discussion and decision on awarding the 2015 grave open-closed contract with Meitner Land Services LLC, this will be motion 14-12-2-2. Misty, would you read the motion, please?
City council motion 14-12-2-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Meitner Land Services. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Meitner Land Services, copies of which are attached hereto and made a part hereof, are hereby approved. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement, and to take such actions as necessary to implement such agreement. The City Council does hereby approve the agreement, and authorize the council president to sign the motion.
Can we hear a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So is this, is this something that is done every?
Every year.
Every single year we do this?
Every December.
And do we, are we even required to look at other?
We do, and in fact, two years ago, we went through and, and did a pretty substantial review of all the other ones, we're now down to only two people within the region that do it anymore, we acquired both their fee schedules from, and they're not exactly the same, but if you do, kind of out through what your last year's activities were at the cemetery, they end up being almost exactly the same, because one's got a little bit more here, the other one's got a little bit more there, so if you have more cremations or, it just depends, but basically, in the long run, they end up being very similar. We, we like Meitner because his, his setup is more conducive to the style of cemetery we have.
And we'd had no complaints, it was good service, so when the comparables financially came in the same, why jump ship and look at the other side of the fence?
Yeah, no, I was just curious whether we were required to...
This is a services contract, and, and there's not a lot of competition.
Yeah.
So we, we basically evaluate the, the two and see if there's any benefit, but, you know, like I said, Wayne's got wider tires on his trucks, he hauls the dirt away, doesn't leave it there, our cemetery's a little bit tighter, so hauling the dirt away and not leaving it there, and then bringing it back, and rolling it back and forth over it, keeps, you know, the bigger tires on his equipment, and being able to dig at certain times, and, and his, his backfilling and, and grading and seeding services have, have made him a valuable partner for our cemetery.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
This is item E, discussion decision on preferred alternative for the parking area between Lake Street and Water Street, this is motion 14-12-2-3. Let's see if you would, please.
City council motion 14-12-2-3, authorizing the city manager to send this motion to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation regarding the modification of parking on the east side of South Main Street between Lake and Water Streets. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the council has received the Wisconsin Department of Transportation report designating possible alternatives for parking in the area known as the Main Street Annex located between Lake and Water Street. Section two, that the council has considered the data and evidence, and evaluated the information, and selected parking alternative blank. Section three, the city clerk is authorized to send this motion to Wisconsin Department of Transportation indicating the council's preference on parking lanes, and to take such actions as necessary to incorporate parking alternative blank in the construction of South Main Street. The City Council does hereby approve the motion, and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
And there is a typo, I guess you saw that, huh? With the understanding that before the vote, we'll have section two and section three will be filled in, so at this time, I'd ask for a motion of approval for motion 141223.
And we have to put an alternative into that, Rudy?
Well...
Yes, with, with that understanding before we vote.
Well, he's saying to make it...
Okay.
To make the motion.
And you got a second?
What was the motion?
The motion was to approve 12, 14123, two dash three, with the understanding that before the vote, we'll have section two and section three filled in.
All right, I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, I, I like section, alternative two, because it's taking away four, not seven spots, I think that alternate one and alternate four are not acceptable for various reasons, but Steve is, but alternate three has the advantage that the DOT gave us three and four as choices, if I read their memo correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but, so now, if you do two, you're starting to buck the DOT on the whole, you know, really in the project, but Steve, if you'd comment to it, you know, four has the advantages, but what, well, one of the things that was lacking in here was a police report on accidents in that intersection. I know you did it, but we're not...
That, that was part of the DOT report in the original, that you should have had earlier.
I mean, it's not that big of, of...
It's, it's higher than they thought, that was the original, because remember, they came in and they told us that we couldn't have the annex?
Right.
And then they came back and said, well, your accidents aren't that high, and then they came back and they said, well, there's certain, there are a lot of accidents there, they're not serious accidents. So they came back and they said, well, you know, the, these are options, we believe that in order to make that intersection as safe as possible, three or four are the best ones. Obviously, you want to keep as much parking as possible, the police department today clearly recommended four. Obviously, I felt three was a better option, because like you, it saves as much parking as possible, while it still handles the, probably one of the most significant issues, which is how traffic enters at the Lake Street intersection there, which has, has always been a, a problem, and so the state, while they prefer four, is more than willing to take three, I, I personally find, from my standpoint, that I think three will work fine.
It does cost us three more stalls, but for the listening audience, it sees that we're taking away downtown parking, they need to be aware that you and I, Steve, were involved in that very first meeting, and the DOT at that time was like, they were like, it was going to be all green space, there was not going to be any parking, and there was not any discussion on it, so we've come a long way from that very first meeting, which would have removed all the, all the parking down there, and to get to, they're willing to accept alternate three. If we did alternate two, where we only lose four parking ones, does that still need to be approved then by the DOT?
They all have to be approved by the DOT, but...
They've already agreed that they would be willing to...
They would consider it, yep. I personally think that, that...
I guess although that it takes away three more parking spots, I would be leaning and recommending three to the rest of the council.
And I, I, I'll just chime in, I was at that meeting, too, and, and two, although two is, is, has the advantage of losing less parking spaces... two is, is, has the advantage of losing less parking spaces, that it makes it very difficult and, and anybody that's parked there and have pulled out there onto, on the main street, that if there's cars parked in those stalls along, along that, that little area there outside the, the, the double area parking.
Just above the eighty-nine on that map, correct, Steve?
Yeah.
Well, I think right here is the worst spot.
Yeah, that's the worst spot. And, and losing those, I think, is, is actually a blessing in disguise. It also, with, with the, with the, losing the spaces on, on the main street, it, it gives the, a driver a view of what's coming.
And that's why they've done that.
Instead of pulling out, yeah.
Because this gives you a, a visibility area.
Yeah.
And this then prevents traffic from stacking and, and double stacking, which is another issue. So you have parking and double stacking.
So I, I think alternate three, I think that's actually the best way to go. Alternate four, I wouldn't even consider.
Yeah, I'm with you. I wouldn't consider four. I was leaning a little bit more towards two, because when I go down there, the biggest issue I have is those spots right there next to the Highway eighty-nine sign on the picture we're looking at. When you come to pull out of there, you just can't see anything. But for me, the most, the majority of the time when I'm coming out of there, I'm going up to that stoplight and turning right. So it usually doesn't bother me that other cars are parked there. But I'm not opposed to making that green space also.
Is that not necessarily green?
It doesn't have to be green. Yeah, that's a debate we can have. We can turn that into like colored concrete or something along that line.
Well, that won't be used for traffic making the right-hand turn, then?
No, it, it'll be a single lane.
Yeah, because right now, it's really...
Three lanes.
Yeah.
You've got the parking lane and then two turn lanes. And actually, the turn lanes are pretty big.
Yeah.
It's, the single lane stays wider than normal because County Highway A is actually routed around that way. So the semi-trucks are trying to make it from this lane. So they're going to get over as close as they can and then use that to pull on to Lake Street.
What about bicycle lane in that point?
Bicycle lane will be along the curb there.
And that's something that'll be in addition to what we have now. As we're looking at it right now, and then in the future, in the future, we're going to be adding that, what is it, five foot, what's the bike lane?
Five feet on that side.
Yeah, five-foot bike lane in there. So that's going to cause more...
In fact, in this area, there'll be five foot on both sides.
Well, not, not, not at where the, the forward green space, because there's no parking there. That would only be a four foot.
Yeah, I, I kind of find it hard to believe that they would run five foot along this edge here and then drop it down to four, but...
Well, I mean, you got to funnel through there.
Yeah. But I think that lane will, that lane will be wider than normal.
And I've seen them where they, where they stop the bicycle lane further back from the intersection and it all, it all merges to, you know, basically, there's not a separate bike lane. But we'll see.
Yeah, that's going to be their deal.
I guess that's the engineer's issue. So, well, we have, I heard three, three for three.
Yep, three.
There's another one. That's four for three.
And two twos have been converted.
Diane, it's your call. It's up to you.
No, I, well, I definitely don't want four because I know our businesses down there want space for parking. So I can't vote for that. And it sounds like we're going to run into trouble if we try to do one and two. And we have other battles to fight. So I think we have to choose our battles. I mean, if, I, so, say go with three and hopefully it turns out good.
So in section two, we'll put alternative three. And in section two, that will be three, we'll also put in alternative three, right? Is that correct? Am I reading that right? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, would you call her over?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Okay, where we at? Item F. This is resolution fourteen dash sixty-four, the firefighter reclassification and compensation. Mitzi, would you read that, please?
Resolution fourteen dash sixty-four, firefighter reclassifications and compensation. Whereas, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills has heretofore authorized nominal fees, stipends, salaries, and other forms of compensation for members of the Lake Mills Fire Department. And whereas, the council seeks to authorize changes to how the Lake Mills Fire Chief staffs the department during critical times when it is difficult to rely solely on volunteer participation, such as when many of the firefighters are working at regular employment outside the city or are engaged in other activities taking them outside the five-minute response time to the department. And whereas, to institute such changes sought by the chief, the council authorizes the practices of having some scheduled coverage at the department on weekdays, having a portion of department personnel scheduled on standby for minimal, regular coverage throughout the weekend period, having officers on standby during nighttime hours, and having officers take active roles in managing the utilization of paid-on-call firefighters. And whereas, the fire chief and other staff have undertaken extensive study and research during 2014 and have proposed a restructuring of the compensation for all fire department personnel to carry out the intent of accomplishing the dual goals of achieving greater overall coverage and reliable responses by firefighting personnel while staying within the 2015 department budget. Now therefore, be it resolved that the restructuring plan has been explained to the council and the city council finds that such restructuring has merit. Be it further resolved that the attached plan to implement the hourly wages, other compensation, and standby pay for paid-on-call and paid-on-premises firefighters and officers is hereby approved effective January one, 2015.
Do we hear a motion of acceptance, resolution fourteen dash sixty-four?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Discussion? I guess we'll turn this over to council.
Can I ask a question before you?
Sure.
I know you spoke with the fire department.
Yes.
And are, is the, in your talking with them, were, did they feel they understood what we were doing?
I believe they did. There were some questions because it's more the implementation than anything about, well, if, if we come to a fire call and we don't get on a truck because we're not needed, do we get paid a flat amount? Because that's what they were used to, fifteen dollars, whether you fought a fire or not. Or do we get paid the hourly wage or a portion thereof? I did explain that to them, but I also explained and emphasized that if you go to a fire call, it lasts more than an hour. You also get your hourly, hourly wage plus whatever fraction thereof or doubling of it, depending on how long the fire call is. That in the end, I believe that financially, the firefighters will be just as well off, possibly even be better off doing it this way. The drills, they were getting a flat fee of fifteen dollars to show up for a drill. The drills generally take two hours. This would compensate them ten dollars an hour for the drill. So if they come to drills, they actually will increase their pay by attending the drills. I, I did check with fire department personnel after I left to find out if there were any significant issues. And nothing has been reported to me as being a problem. So I think that the fire department personnel are, are aware that this isn't a magic solution to all of their staffing needs, but at least it's a start. And we'll see how it goes during 2015.
And seeing that we have no fire department members in our audience tonight or for public comment, I guess that would lead me to believe that they at least understand and are okay with it.
I think so.
Or they're at a drill.
Yeah, or they're at a drill.
That's true, isn't it?
Drill night. There are obviously always fire station lawyers, but I think Vicki has done her research and, and put together a proposal that meets our economic requirements while giving us the option to be able to bring in people that work longer hours. That's the issue.
We definitely want good coverage. We don't want somebody's house to burn down. But we don't want to have a full-time fire department, which I know some people in town have been worried about. And I think this is a, a good way to start trying to deal with that double-edged sword there.
I think so.
It's a good start.
Yeah, I have a couple, just some clarification things here for me. So the, the chief right now is considered volunteer at this point in time, but may not be after this?
In my memo that I put together, I was trying to explain how people shouldn't believe that we no longer have a volunteer fire department. However, the, the amount that was budgeted for the chief kind of puts him in that gray area, whether he's volunteer or not. And since he is being hourly paid for everything that he does, and he has specific requirements that he has to meet in order to do his chief duties, he probably technically isn't a volunteer because the department won't work without him doing his duties. But for most firefighters, most paid-on-call firefighters, if they show up to a fire call or, or do their duties or not, we're not requiring them to do certain things at certain times. And, but when they do show up, they have to follow everything that needs to be required of them. But it's still up to them whether they show up or not. And in that sense, they're still volunteers.
So, and along with that, the deputy chief right now is full-time and will continue to be that way.
Right.
And then the other thing that, for clarification here is, the, normally, the volunteers will be paid out on, on an annual basis. Now, is that going to be changed now to monthly or every other week for them?
It'll be twenty-six pay periods a year, just like regular employees, because technically, in the eyes of the law, they are part-time employees. They're paid-on-call part-time employees, but they are employees nonetheless. And we've treated the fire department personnel basically as employees for all of those purposes anyway for years. They pay income taxes. They have social security withheld, you know. All of those things happen to them with their pay. It's just that now we're going to do it every two weeks because it'll just be a nightmare to try to come up with all of that at the end of the year. Because as you'll see later in, in your packet and your agenda, there is going to be a fund transfer and put into retirement. And that is because, starting the first of the year, we're going to be tracking everybody's payroll. And if they become eligible for the pension, then we have to pay a contribution towards their pension, just like any other employee. There aren't going to be many that are even possibly even going to become eligible, but we do have to put some money in there and, and there's a transfer for that. Because even the full-time city employees who work in other departments, but they are firefighters, next year, when they're being paid an hourly wage rather than a stipend, they're going to be counted, that pay is going to be counted towards their retirement. And they'll have to make a contribution, just like everybody else. And then the city has to pay, pick up its share. So there will be some additional costs for retirement. But as you see on that attached page, I did account for what I thought would likely be the impact. And the transfer that you will be doing later tonight, if you adopt it, will go a long ways towards covering that.
And that, and that's the WPA? Is that what it's called?
WRS.
WRS, okay.
Right. Yeah, some employees, once you put in six hundred hours in a year, you become eligible for the pension. And those are people who were already in WRS, either for a different employer or for us, as of Janu, or July first, 2011. People who started for the city or another WRS employer after July first, 2011, now the state has the requirement of twelve hundred hours in a year or a two-thirds employee. And it's very doubtful that more than maybe one or two, and that depends on how many paid-on-premises shifts they volunteer to, to pick up, will ever even approach that twelve hundred hours in a year.
But it's still something that has to be tracked. That's why we try to get down to twenty-six pay periods.
Yeah.
Because you have to, you have to be able to say, okay, we're cutting you off here.
Yeah, that's, that's the major reason for doing it every, every two weeks, because we'll know what everybody's hours are at so that we can manage personnel.
So did, did staff ask for any input from the Police and Fire Commission? Did they have any input on this?
This is a day-to-day operations thing. That's why it's coming to the council. The Police and Fire Commission's input has to do with hiring and disciplining fire department and police department personnel only. But I did inform them. I, I sent them one of the memos from last time, so everybody on the Police and Fire Commission is aware of it.
Yeah, okay. Because this does bring up a point, obviously, that this does have dealings with hiring, obviously, because we are paying them now a different way. So it's just my thought, we should have made sure that we ran it.
They already are hired. When the Police and Fire Commission appoints them, they're already hired at that point. So we aren't adding any new personnel at this point. If someone else joins the department or starts doing paid-on-premises and they're in a different fire department, those individuals will be brought to the Police and Fire Commission for their approval.
Yeah, and I guess the point I'm getting, trying to get across here is, it is a change of status for them, especially if some of them could go over that six hundred hours and start having to get retirement benefits, things like that, so...
But that's, that's not a hiring and firing issue. That's a personnel issue that's dealt with between staff and council on that. Please, Police and Fire Commission.
Yeah, if the Police and Fire Commission were the type that has the day-to-day operations as an optional power, which ours does not, and most of them don't have that, then yeah, it would have gone to the Police and Fire Commission and we wouldn't be bringing it to the council. But in the makeup of how our Police and Fire Commission functions within city government, they're restricted to approving personnel to be hired and disciplining personnel. Okay?
Vicki, I'm confused on the answer. I apologize. I didn't catch your answer. So, and you did catch, I catch, I caught the part on that. It was a gray area. Is chief then, he has been considered volunteer for the minimal amount of time that he puts in, and I don't mean that negatively, just what his schedule has been, amount of hours. Does he now become a, a paid staff?
He's always been paid staff. He's not getting paid anything more. You'll notice the fire chief, was it eleven point two, eleven thousand two hundred a year?
I realize that, but was he considered volunteer to the city and not a staff?
I don't really think so.
Like a parks department person working in the park?
All officers are, are, all officers are paid. Are they all considered staff then and not, they're all city staff, not volunteer? City officers, yep. Oh, okay.
Well, that brings up a point, because I was told he didn't come to the Police and Fire Commission meetings because he was volunteer. And that's why the deputy came to the Police and Fire Commission meetings, so...
Well, I, I don't know if that was anything ever cast in stone. That might be just what someone said. But the fire chief is still going to be paid the same amount under the new program as under the previous program, unless he takes some paid-on-premises shifts. And, and that would be, anybody would be eligible in the fire department if they have the time available during the daytime to sign up for a paid-on-premises shift.
And basically, that means that they will not leave the city during the day they've signed up. They'll be here if there's a call, right?
Paid-on-premises has to be at the fire station or at least doing fire department duties under the direction of probably the deputy chief. It's the standby people who sign up for standby on the weekends. They get two dollars an hour to do standby. And then they're required to stay within five minutes' response to the fire station, but they don't have to be actively doing anything other than being available. And that helps to ensure that on the weekends, when a lot of people are doing their own thing, that there's at least a core number of firefighters. thing, that there's at least a core number of firefighters. There'd be four firefighters and one officer who are on standby to make sure that there's coverage in case there's a call. The other ones can be paged in if there's a call that's big enough or unknown enough, because like, say that there's an accident out on the interstate. Firefighters receiving that page aren't going to know, the officer isn't going to know, "Do we need the jaws of life, don't we?", until they actually get out there, usually. So, those would probably, all of them would be paged in for an accident out on the interstate. They would rather err on the side of caution and having enough people than not. But for smaller calls, like carbon monoxide, that sort of thing, I think carbon monoxide would count, wouldn't it, Rudy? Or maybe a fire alarm, that you've got a history that they have false alarms at that address. Maybe for those kinds of things, probably just the corps crew would go out there and check it out. Then if it's something bigger, then they would page additional people to come in.
I think this is a real good solution to a problem we've been working on for years now. And I want to thank council and staff for their work on this.
Thank the firefighter officers at the station, especially Chief Hines and Deputy Chief Yandre for all the work they've done on it, and the number of hours they've put in to get this thing running. And hopefully, this will work. It may not, we may have to do some adjustments, but it's a good start, I think.
And this is a problem that all fire departments are having, everywhere. And unless they're a full-time fire department, they're running into problems having people when they need them. We're not alone.
Nope.
We had, I attended Region 8 City Managers Meeting last week, and every one of them said this was one of their major issues. And they were actually talking about regionalized fire departments. So, Jefferson County had a fire department rather than each community. And that was a real debate. Should have heard that. But the issue is so big, and the problems are so intense, that while this isn't a great solution, it's better than what we have now, and it's not a full-time fire department, so.
So, if there's anybody out there in the listening audience that would like to be a firefighter, come down to the station.
Mm-hmm.
And at that, if there's no other discussion, let's call a roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Well, we've got more resolutions than Carter's got pills tonight. All right, that was, that was F. This called G, Resolution 14-65. This establishes the fee for the operations and use of the Rock Lake Cemetery in the city. Misty, could you read the resolution?
Resolution 14-65, establishing fees for operation and use of Rock Lake Cemetery, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. That Section 7-6-5 of the Municipal Code of the City of Lake Mills authorizes and directs the City Council from time to time to establish a schedule of fees relating to the use and operation of Rock Lake Cemetery. Now therefore, be it resolved that the attached fee schedule for year 2015 shall be in effect from and after January 1, 2015.
And do I hear a motion of adoption of Resolution 14-65?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And discussion? Steve?
Betsy?
Betsy.
The contractor, Meitner, has submitted this list of changes to the fee schedule. You'll see most of them have a $10 increase. An additional fee that was added, you'll see where there is a blank in the 14 schedule. Charges $50 in the 15 for double cremation burials. That's just something that they have had to add for satisfying the requests of people wanting to-
Did you work out a percentage on what that increase was?
No, because it's just generally, they're adding $10 to the fees. So, it won't work out to be a percentage across the board on each item. You'll see, some of them haven't changed at all.
Right.
Discussion?
Yeah. No, I think we could point out that, on what Betsy had just said, if you look at the schedule of the changes, most of them have not changed.
Right.
One, two, three, four have gone up about $10. And what do we have? Two, four, six, eight, 10. Just for the listening public, we've got about 11 that, or 10 that stayed the same, and four that increased by $10 each.
It's only a one-time fee, right?
Basically, it's no change at all.
Misty, if you would, call a roll.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0.
This brings us to Item H. This is 14-66. This is the inclusion under the State of Wisconsin Deferred Compensation Program. And I think this is what Steve touched on earlier. And Misty, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution 14-66, resolution for inclusion under the State of Wisconsin Deferred Compensation Program. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, that pursuant to the provisions of Section 40.81 Sub 1, Sub Chapter 7 of Chapter 40 of the Wisconsin statutes, which provides in part as follows. An employer other than the state may provide for its employees the deferred compensation plan established by the Board under Section 40.80. Any employer, including the state, who makes the plan under Section 40.80 available to any of its employees, shall make it available to all its employees under procedures established by the department under this chapter. Such City Council hereby determines to be included under the State of Wisconsin Deferred Compensation Program, provided by Section 40.80, Sub Chapter 7 of Chapter 40 of the Wisconsin statutes, and regulated by Chapter ETF 70 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code for its eligible personnel. And be it further resolved, the proper officers are hereby authorized and directed to take all actions and make such reductions and submit such deferrals as are required by the Department of Employee Trust Funds of the State of Wisconsin pursuant to Sub Chapter 7 of Chapter 40 of the Wisconsin statutes. And be it further resolved that the City of Lake Mills agrees to be bound by the terms and conditions of the contracts between the state, its investment providers, and its plan administrator, and the plan and trust document, and the employer guide as amended from time to time. The employer certifies it has received a copy of the plan and trust document. Be it further resolved that the City of Lake Mills representative submit a certified copy of this resolution and designation of agent to the State of Wisconsin Department of Employee Trust Funds and the plan administrator. Be it further resolved that the City Council, recognizing the deferred compensation Board's responsibility for maintaining the integrity of the plan, the City Council hereby resolved that the proper officers of City of Lake Mills are hereby authorized and directed to cooperate fully with the plan administrator in accordance with procedures established by the Department of Employee Trust Funds in processing requests for withdrawal in case of an unforeseeable emergency, as defined in the Internal Revenue Section 457 Sub D Sub 1 Sub A Sub IIII and Treasury Regulation 1.457-6 Sub C Sub 1 of the regulations. The designated agent is directed to acknowledge on a form authorized by the Department of Employee Trust Funds that relevant unforeseeable emergency information has been given and received.
Sorry, Misty.
Fine job.
Do I hear a motion of approval for resolution, or adoption of Resolution 14-66?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
I was going to call for a rereading.
This is, this is going to be for all eligible employees.
Right. We have to offer it by state requirements. We have to offer it to all employees. This is basically a plan that we offer to allow them to make deposits into. It's not something that we're, it doesn't have any cost to the city. Do you have anything you want to add, Misty? So, it's pretty much just, you know, if you're an employee and you want to subtract 50 bucks in your paycheck, put it into your deferred comp, that's an option now.
Oh, is this different than their retirement, WRS?
This is substantially different. The retirement is put into a specific ETF fund that's managed separately.
Is this more like a 401?
Yeah, this is more of a 401 type.
Personal.
And do they get to choose?
They have options.
Okay. They don't get a free rein?
They have aggressive funds, and, yeah. And they have a manager that comes down and talks to the employees and works with them. You can actually go online every single day and make adjustments if you so desire, but it costs you. So, I don't recommend it.
Any other discussion? Misty, if you would?
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Brings us to Item I, Resolution 14-67, inclusion under the Income Continuation Insurance Plan. Misty, if you would?
Resolution 14-67, a resolution for inclusion under the Income Continuation Insurance Plan, resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, that pursuant to the provisions of Section 40.61 of the Wisconsin statutes, City Council hereby determines to offer the Income Continuation Insurance Plan to eligible personnel through the program of the State of Wisconsin Group Insurance Board, and agrees to abide by the terms of the plan as set forth in the contract between the Group Insurance Board and the administrator. The resolution shall be effective on the first of the month, on or after 90 days following its receipt at the Department of Employee Trust Funds. The proper officers are hereby authorized and directed to take all actions and make salary deductions for premiums and submit payments required by the State of Wisconsin Group Insurance Board to provide such income continuation insurance.
Do I hear a motion of adoption of 14-67?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And Misty?
Is, quick question. Is this a piggyback with the last thing?
This is, this is different. It's similar. It's part of the union contract. This provides, it's like an insurance, so that if you become sick for longer than a certain period of time, you get a percentage of your income until 65, so that you're not, you don't become indigent. It does have a cost that the city has to pick up.
Is this long-term only, or does it do short-term?
Well, we're paying for a 90-day payout. So, our 60 days of sick time is basically per week, and this is a straight 90 days. So, if you take the 65 days that we allow them to have, it translates into the 90 days. So, if you keep your sick leave, you can get to that 90 days and get in. Now, you as an employee, we're paying for the 90-day payout. If you wanted to go to 60 or 30, you could pay for that yourself and get that payout time. And it's a pretty minimal fee. I mean, particularly based on the fact that this year, there's no premium. And it's easier to go from the 30-day to the 90-day than it is from the 90-day to the 30-day. So, they're recommending that employees seriously consider buying down to the 60 or 30-day. But the city is only paying for the 90-day program.
So, the 90-day is less expensive?
Yes. It basically translates across all city employees to half a percent. So, you remember, we budgeted 1.5% for pay increases. We gave them a 1% pay increase, and then we held that other half percent to pay for the income continuation. Now, if we don't have any, if we have a premium holiday, which is in, well, we know we're going to have a premium holiday in '15, then that half a percent will be paid out to the employees in December as a bonus. If, same thing in '16. If, again, it's a half a percent, if we don't have to pay it, then they get that in a bonus at the end of the year. And there's, again, a 1% pay increase at the beginning of the year. So, this, it works out absolutely consistent with what was in our budget for this year and projected into the future.
Right.
Well, and these companies pick 90 days because that's catastrophic. I mean, if you blow out an ACL, you're out 12 weeks, you're still within 90 days. So, this is, that's all this is, major issues.
Yeah, 90 days is pretty consistent for what a city puts together. Normally, a lot of us have the 65 to 90-day sick time period, and then you hit that time period, and the city's basically giving you sick leave to get to that period, and then the insurance kicks in. Now, some employees, obviously, are going to have, you know, if you have problems maintaining your sick leave, you may have a period where you don't have coverage. Or if you were smart and you didn't have any sick leave and had problems maintaining it, you would probably be advisable to pay the minimal amount of money to go to the shorter time period.
Right.
Okay.
Misty?
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Okay, now we get to the money transfer portion. This is the exciting part. This is Resolution 14-68. This is a fund transfer from the capital budget, street rebuilding to the investment pool. Misty, if you would?
Resolution 14-68, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer, finance director to transfer funds. Whereas, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills adopted the 2014 Annual Capital Budget by Ordinance 1119A. And whereas, the adopted 2014 Annual Capital Budget may only be amended by vote of the City Council as provided for under Section 65.90 Sub 5 Sub A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas, the Public Works Department Streets has requested that the 2014 Annual Budget be amended by transferring funds from Public Works Street Rebuild to the local government investment pool reserve fund to be held until 2015 for street repairs, street maintenance, and storm sewer installation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the annual budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2014, is hereby amended as follows. Public Works Street Rebuild, adapted 525,000, amended 376,300. Local Government Investment Pool Reserve Fund, adapted 0, amended 148,700. Subtotal for both adapted and amended, 525,000. Total capital fund budget, 2,349,700 for both adapted and amended. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with Section 65.90 Sub 5 Sub A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
And do I have a motion of adoption of 14-68?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And Betsy?
This one's probably mine.
Okay.
I provided you with a memo that detailed that we had borrowed money in this fiscal year to do certain work. We had a lot of work around the school, where we did substantial upgrades that we weren't necessarily anticipating, and so we held off on some other projects, not knowing how much money we had invested in those, and we were waiting for the bills to come in to make a decision, and it got late, and the weather went bad on us quick. And so, we recommend that we hold this money over to next year and make those public improvements as part of next year's public works projects.
For the listening public, then that, that means it'll still get used what it was originally designated for, but allows us legally to pay it out in '15 rather than '14.
Right. It puts it into a fund where we can say it's spent in this year, and then we can bring it back in and spend it out of that fund in the next fiscal year. There were several- There were several major projects, one was Madison Street, a bunch of them were oil and chip projects, we did some oil and chip projects, we didn't get to as many as we had anticipated. Next year, we've budgeted to do Cook Street, Brown's Court, Madison Street, and Circle Drive. Circle Drive is basically a stormwater project, not a street rebuild, but it's a, it's a project that includes Ferry and Willen Beach Road. Brown's Court, we, we determined, we put in a hundred thousand dollars for Madison, we've been looking at it and thinking that it might be a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five to do it exactly what we need to do, so we'll, we'll take about twenty-five of this and put it there. Brown's Court, uh, there's no storm sewer anywhere in the area, and as you noted when we went on our trip, that was a main storm sewer issue, and so we may have under budgeted in the storm sewer area there, so that's one of the issues that she mentioned in the resolution is, is that a storm sewer would be an issue, and we may have to bring storm sewer a long ways to get it there. Uh, then we would go back and do the oil and chip programs, uh, and then we'd have covered almost everything that we'd done because we'd rebudgeted Madison Street again this year, and so literally, we'd cover everything that we'd budgeted over the last two years.
Questions?
I just have a question on Brown's Court. If there's no storm water around it, why would we do Brown's Court? And now, why would we, you know, wait till we have enough money to bring the storm water, storm, you know?
Well, we do, we do have enough money to bring it if we use these funds, and at some point in time, we have to bring it, I mean...
Which direction will that come from?
It will probably run to the southeast. We're either gonna, we're gonna run it down Fargo Street all the way to Lake Street there at, at the old CPN, or we might turn and head down Ree Street to go to O'Neill, and then out that direction. We, that's an analysis the engineers will have to do, but either one is...
Okay, and that is considered part of the Brown's Court project?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, okay, I did not understand that. Okay, thank you.
And so it's, we're trying to make sure that we've got everything covered and we're not leaving ourselves out.
Well, that's good to hear.
Anything else? Let's see what call vote is.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
I have one quick comment. With the item we just mentioned, Steve, uh, if we're doing what we're doing with the storm water, that will be an asset for other streets in that area.
Every single one of them.
You know, because then we can hook up to what we do for Brown's Court.
Well, we'll, we'll construct storm sewer all the way up, and so as you run along those streets, you'll put in inlets at all the appropriate points to drain Reed Street or Fargo or whatever street we run on, so every street will have substantially improved storm drainage, because right now...
It's a mess.
It was amazing that, you know, you anticipated you could run a block and maybe catch something. There is on, and there is on Mulberry, but our debate, and when we originally did the, um, the preliminary thought process was, we just run it up to Mulberry and tie it into that inlet up at that intersection. That one's already overcharged with the work that we're doing up on the north end, and the amount of storm water that's already coming into this Madison Street storm sewer off of Main Street and Mulberry, um, the engineers have started coming back and saying, well, maybe we want to run this other direction, it's probably more appropriate anyways because the break is right there at that...
Right.
At that point on, on Mulberry, so it was...
Well, that's something.
We needed to think about where we could come up with some extra money, and this just, this is one of the options.
But it's some, it explains why, uh, Brown's Court is as expensive as it is. It isn't just that chunk, we're looking at a much bigger thing.
Well, there, there are a lot of issues on Brown's Court, and maybe this is going a little too far, but...
Right.
There's, when we tear that street up, it's narrow, it's twenty feet wide. When we do the water and sewer in that street, it's going to be closed. So how do you get in and out of that apartment building? We may have to pay to, to bring in a, an alternate driveway.
Okay.
So those are, you know, there are all kinds of issues that we have to deal with as we work through these processes.
And residents will be notified by mail?
Let's, 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 uh, we're, yeah, we're getting on.
Thanks.
Let's, let's go to Resolution fourteen dash sixty-nine. This is a fund transfer for the fire department equipment repair for two thousand and fourteen, and Misty, would you read the resolution, please?
Fourteen dash sixty-nine, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer, finance director to transfer funds, whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills adopted the two thousand fourteen annual general budget by ordinance one-one-one-eight A, and whereas the adopted two thousand fourteen annual general budget may only be amended by vote of the city council as provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub-five sub-A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas, the fire department has requested that the two thousand fourteen annual budget be amended by transferring funds from fire department stipends to fire department facility maintenance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the annual general budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand fourteen, is hereby amended as follows. Fire department stipends, adopted seventy-six thousand, amended fifty-eight thousand. Fire department facility maintenance, adopted five thousand four hundred, amended twenty-three thousand four hundred. Fire department fires and practices, adopted forty-five thousand, amended fifty-one thousand five hundred. Subtotal for both adopted and amended, one hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred. Total general fund budget for both adopted and amended, four million six hundred thousand seven hundred. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub-five sub-A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
Do we hear a motion of adoption of Resolution fourteen dash sixty-nine?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And Steve, this is, uh, pay for...
There was a HVAC repair, a coil that went out in the fire department that was about seven thousand six hundred dollars. And then there was a fiber optic line strung from City Hall to the fire department to provide internet connection because they have had terrible internet, and, um, it also provides them full access now to our GIS system.
And, and also the payroll, right?
Right, and the payroll system, which is going to be critical in the maintenance of the system in the future.
What's those GIS stand for?
Geographic Information Systems. We have, uh, all the water systems, all the fire hydrants, all the storm sewers, all the, on a map, and you just click on it and it brings it up, and the, so, it's, fire hydrants particularly are critical to...
Right, mhm.
Just quickly, amended numbers, actually, I came up higher. I got one thirty-two-nine, this one's one twenty-six-four. Am I math wrong?
I bet you that's fifty-one thousand, huh?
Yep, it's supposed to be one thirty-two-nine.
Well, don't those two numbers have to be the same?
Yeah.
So both of them should be one thirty-two-nine?
Well...
No, the first one is one twenty-six.
I have to see what I did wrong.
Should both be one thirty-two-nine.
Yeah.
So something's wrong somewhere.
Yeah.
Good catch, Steve.
Thought I did it.
The amended version, or the amended number for the fires and practices, it says that's for the December payment. Now, is that because of what we just passed in the resolution to change the...
No, that's for next year. This is this year. Apparently, there must be some expenses that were more than...
Well, what we have to do is, in the budget, it, it wasn't calculated that we would be paying December fires and practices this year.
Right.
Because traditionally, the cutoff is the end of November.
Yep.
And so, because of the way we're changing how we're doing the payroll next year, we've got to pick up December this year where we hadn't anticipated it.
Nope, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I apologize, I'll have those numbers fixed for you, and before Rudy signs the, the resolution, we'll, I'll fix it.
It's one thirty-two-nine, though.
Right, yeah.
So the, the category stays the same, right? Stipends, facilitated management, fire practices?
Right.
Just the numbers would change.
The, yeah, the total has to come out right.
How do you get the one thirty-two-nine under the adopted category?
I'll have to see where the, the beginning number must have been inputted incorrectly.
All righty then. Any other discussion? Call vote, please, Misty?
Mrs. Fritsch? Don't we need to make an amendment to the resolution to, to change that number?
She's just going to pencil whip it in.
I don't think, can we do that, Becky?
Um, it would be better if you made an amendment.
Okay. I, I'm moved, I'd like to move to amend Resolution fourteen six-nine.
I have a question, do we even need to pass this, or it can be table till...
No, it, it has to be passed tonight. It has to be done in two thousand and fourteen.
Unless you want to meet again?
No.
No, it's, uh, go ahead here.
I'll make a motion to amend Resolution fourteen sixty-nine to read subtotal one thirty-two-nine in both adopted and amended.
And a second, please?
A second.
No discussion, right? Misty, would you call the ro, vote for the amendment?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Now, would you call the vote for...
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution fourteen sixty-nine as amended.
And would you call the vote on that?
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you, Diane.
Sorry. A little picky, but probably better.
That's okay, that's probably better, err on, on the safe side. Resolution fourteen dash seventy, this is a fund transfer for the fire department travel and training for two thousand and fifteen. Misty, would you read?
Resolution fourteen dash seventy, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer, finance director to transfer funds, whereas the City of Lake Mills Common Council adopted the two thousand fifteen annual general budget by ordinance eleven forty-two A, and whereas the adopted two thousand fifteen annual general budget may only be amended by vote of the common council as provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub-five sub-A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas, the fire department has requested that the two thousand fifteen annual budget be amended by transferring funds from fire department travel training to fire department retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Lake Mills that the annual general budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand fifteen, is hereby amended as follows. Fire department travel training, adopted twenty-three thousand one hundred, amended seventeen thousand one hundred. Fire department retirement, adopted eight thousand four hundred, amended fourteen thousand four hundred. Subtotal for both adopted and amended, thirty-one thousand five hundred. Total general fund budget for both adopted and amended, four million seven hundred nineteen thousand two hundred. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub-five sub-A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
And do I have a motion of adoption of fourteen dash seventy?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And this is what you were talking about?
Correct, yeah.
So this is, this is...
This is for next year.
Right, for the retirement fund.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Misty, would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Uh, brings us to Resolution fourteen dash seventy-one. Fund transfer, treasure to insurance. Misty, if you would?
Resolution fourteen dash seventy-one, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, whereas the City of Lake Mills Common Council adopted the two thousand fourteen annual budget by ordinance one-one-one-nine A, and whereas the adopted two thousand fourteen annual budget may only be amended by vote of the common council as provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero sub-five sub-A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas, the treasurer has requested that the two thousand fourteen annual general budget be amended by transferring funds from fire department salaries and stipends to treasure insurance unemployment LWM dues. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the annual budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January one, two thousand fourteen, is hereby amended as follows. Fire department salaries and stipends, adopted seventy-six thousand, amended sixty-six thousand. Insurance unemployment LWM dues, adopted one hundred twenty thousand, amended one hundred thirty thousand. Total for both adopted and amended is one hundred ninety-six thousand. Total general fund budget, both adopted and amended, four million six hundred thousand seven hundred. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero sub-five sub-A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
Do I have a motion of adoption of fourteen dash seventy-one?
So moved.
And a second, please.
A second.
It needs to be amended right away. Can't have seventy-six in both resolutions. Seventy.
But I, I left it at seventy-six because I would have been working under the assumption that the other one was going to be passed.
Okay.
But, I mean, if you wanted amended, of course.
Yeah, so now it needs to be amended to say fifty-eight, right? Because now that stipends is fifty-eight thousand, because sixty-nine took it down to fifty-eight.
So you start at fifty-eight, and then take ten thousand to forty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Where?
The first line.
Right.
Fire department salaries and stipends should go from fifty-eight to forty-eight?
Right.
I'll make a motion.
Based on the other one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend Resolution fourteen seventy-one to read fifty-eight thousand under fire department salaries and stipends adopted, and forty-eight thousand for the same category amended. Is that correct? Okay, that's my motion.
And does the second one stay the same, the insurance?
Yeah, it's still taking ten thousand.
Ten thousand, all right.
Yeah, it stays the same, the bottom number would be different.
Do we have a, I need a second?
Well, they'll change the bottom number, don't we?
Yeah, the one ninety-six will be different.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
We got to take eighteen thousand out of it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm getting one seventy-eight.
Okay, add to my amended motion that the total will become one seventy-sixth, one seventy-eight thousand for both adopted and amended. I didn't catch that.
And we got a second, right?
I don't know, I don't think we do.
Do we get a second?
You know what, I'll second it.
Okay, let's go over this one more time. Fire department salaries and stipend, adopted fifty-eight thousand, amended forty-eight thousand, bringing the subtotal to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for both adopted and amended. That's, that's the amendment.
That's what I said.
And that's because of our earlier resolution that we changed, because that then changed this number.
Any other discussion on that amendment? If you would, Misty?
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundin?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And now, um, do I hear a, uh, motion of adoption for Resolution fourteen dash seventy-one as amended?
So moved.
And a second.
And second.
Any other discussion? Misty, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
I do want to make one statement on that, that was an insurance issue that relates to the dam.
Oh, really? I didn't catch that.
Yes, that's what's that, there are two issues in there, one was our, our workers' comp insurance, but the other one was the dam insurance, that cost us about $10,000, $12,000.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, item N. Resolution 14-72, authorization to borrow funds, land purchase. Misty, if you would, please.
Resolution 14-72, authorization to borrow funds, land purchase. Whereas, the City of Lake Mills has determined the purchasing and marketing some parcels in the existing industrial park will increase the availability of developable property and promote continued industrial growth within the city. And whereas, the City of Lake Mills has purchased property in the current industrial park. And whereas, the amount of the purchase was higher than originally anticipated in the 2014 budget. And whereas, the additional cost of this land was not incorporated into the tax levy or other borrowing. And whereas, the city council deems it necessary and in the best interest of the city that the sum of 140,000 be borrowed for such purposes upon the terms and conditions herein after set forth. Now therefore be it resolved that for the purposes herein above set forth, the city, by its city manager and treasurer finance director, borrow the sum of 140,000 and to evident such indebtedness, said city manager and treasurer finance director shall make, execute, and deliver to Greenwood State Bank for and on behalf of the city the promissory note of the city to be dated December 23, 2014 and in said amount with interest at the rate of 3% per annum over five years maturity period.
Do I hear a motion of adoption of 14-72?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Discussion? Steve?
We ended up buying more land than we had anticipated when we made the deal with Riverwood this fall. Really wasn't a budget issue because we didn't do the creek restoration, which we had anticipated borrowing a couple, $200,000 for. We also had $650,000 budgeted for buying the Department of Public Works, it only cost us 450, so we didn't borrow the money that we had here, we did have it budgeted, but we didn't borrow it. So if we plan on using that expense line item to cover this, we need to borrow the money. If we go with what we did for the Public Works building, there's $200,000 of unreserved fund balance left that we don't have to borrow any money. Those are the options here.
Hmm.
The one item that I would prefer that we borrow the funds on is that based on, if you read that wetlands report, there's an issue in there that that money may be of value to us at that point in time of continuing to develop the wetlands areas. So that's an important issue that we may, that isn't fully developed here, but you know, we only got the appraisal, the official appraisal on the PFW today. So we were really headed towards borrowing this money. Knowing based on our negotiations with DNR, how the best resolution in the industrial park is going to end up being, I think that money is best left there to handle those issues and we borrow these funds. Betsy's set this borrowing up so that the first payment is due in 2016. So it doesn't affect next year's budget or this year as far as any debt or any payments.
Well, and interest rates are very low right now as well. And there's talk about it going up, so if we're going to need the money two years from now, it's probably going to cost us more.
It's also a possibility that there's, we're going to go out and bond again this year. And if we could just slip this into the bond, we'll get even lower interest rates.
Okay. I think we should go with the resolution as it's written, right? Isn't that what we're saying?
I, that's what I think is our best option.
That's what you were just recommending.
Yes, but there is an option to go with the cash payment.
No, I think.
Any other discussion? Yep? Steve?
Nope.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Item O. Resolution 14-73, accept public improvements and reduce letter of credit for the White Pines Estate condominiums. Let's see if you would read the resolution, please.
Resolution 14-73, conditional reduction of letter of credit and acceptance of public improvements, White Pines Estates condominiums. Whereas, the city council of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by the statutes of the state of Wisconsin has established certain standards and procedures for subdivisions within the corporate limits of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, and within one and one-half mile thereof. And whereas, the developer of the condominium development has submitted certain documents for review and approval by the City of Lake Mills. And whereas, the city manager, consultants, and city staff have reviewed the various documents submitted and have made recommendations concerning approval of said acceptance of public improvements. And whereas, the City of Lake Mills staff and consulting engineer has heretofore inspected the public improvements constructed in the plot of White Pines Estates condominiums. And whereas, the developers and contractors of the White Pines Estates condominiums have constructed public improvements in accordance with specifications and standards established by the City of Lake Mills. And now therefore be it resolved, this 16th day of December 2014, by the Lake Mills City Council, that the City of Lake Mills conditionally accepts all public improvements as city-owned property located within White Pines Estates condominiums. And be it further resolved that the City of Lake Mills will release the financial guarantee of $41,000 when, one, restoration work made necessary due to the construction of sidewalks on the west side of Country View Lane is completed. And two, the sidewalk improvements have been re-inspected after one year from date of construction. They are acceptable since no test results were submitted to verify proper construction of the sidewalks as required in the developers' agreement. Three, the one-year guarantee period required in the developers' agreement has been completed. Be it further resolved that because most of the improvements have been found to be acceptable upon inspection, there is no need to retain the full amount of the financial guarantee. So the city council agrees to reduce the financial guarantee to an amount totaling $9,000. And the developer, Silverstone Holdings LLC, may present this resolution to its financial institution to cause the financial guarantee to be reduced, extended, and amended until December 16, 2015, under the same terms as the original financial guarantee.
Do I hear a motion of acceptance of 14-73?
So moved.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
I just have a question. So are we really, really, really sure that we're okay with 9,000 on this?
That's 150%.
Oh, it is, okay.
So.
I'd just rather not.
Our estimate is that it's about $6,000 or less. And that would be if it had to be replaced. And based on the contractor who did the work, who does a lot of work for us, we're relatively confident that we're not going to have any issues. Just that they forgot to get the test cylinders when they did the work. And so our code requires that we hold a bond for a certain period of time.
Well, we've been caught holding the bag a few times over the history of the city. I hate to be another time for that, so.
Right, and this developer is Silverstone, which is Christian Stibbs, they're local.
Okay.
The ridge has been Tomer Bank, which is a different story as far as what the conditions and things have been. This has been a pretty reasonable developer to work with, and we're very satisfied with the work.
Thank you.
Question, oh, go ahead.
I said thank you for the information.
Steve, on section two, was there a, so they didn't, someone didn't give us the reinspection data that was supposed to be done? And since no tests were submitted, then we had to take, the staff had to take tests, or someone had to take?
There were no tests taken.
Yeah, when they pour the concrete, they're supposed to test it, and that wasn't done.
Slump test.
No, these are cylinders.
So.
And they're supposed to take a cylinder, and they're supposed to let them harden for a certain period of time, and then they crush them, and that tells you how, what the strength is. They're supposed to be like, at a certain number of days, it's supposed to be 7,000 pounds, and after a certain 14,000 pounds. They didn't even take cylinders.
Where I'm going with this is simply, if there was a cost involved, because they didn't do that, did we recoup that cost from them?
There were no costs to us. They're, they should have called us, we should have been out there and taken the cylinders. They didn't. So basically, they poured the concrete, it didn't have any of that testing done. Now, your concern would be, we bill all the developers, our engineer sends us the data, we then send a bill to the developers, they pay it. Otherwise, it's taken out of their letter of credit, so that's never an issue. In this case, they didn't, we didn't have anybody there, there was no cost to us. The issue is, is that there has to be some way to guarantee that if there's no test data, then we use the fact that we give it a certain period of time, and if it survives that period of time, we're happy. But to guarantee that it survives that period of time, we take 150% bond. And then if it doesn't survive, we have enough money to fix it. Our anticipation is it will survive, but.
So we still have the money in case?
Diane said, we do not want to be caught where we are unprepared to deal with it. And so we've always taken a very conservative approach to this process.
So that's what the 9,000 is for?
That's what the 9,000 is, to replace the concrete if it doesn't survive.
That satisfies me, thank you.
Misty, please?
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
And finally, item P. Ordinance 1144, disorderly conduct with a motor vehicle, this is the first reading. And I guess we just read the title.
Don't we read more than the title?
Not normally.
Oh.
Third reading we do.
First reading.
No.
Would you like to have?
I'd like to have this read. Yes, I would, I think that the public would like to hear it too.
Ordinance 1144, disorderly conduct with a motor vehicle. The city council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section 1, the city council of the City of Lake Mills creates Section 5-1-14 of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code as follows. 5-1-14, disorderly conduct with motor vehicle prohibited. No person may operate a motor vehicle in the city in any of the following manners. A, accelerate at a rate of speed that leaves tire marks on the pavement or which causes the vehicle tires to squeal. B, accelerate at a rate of speed that causes the vehicle to fishtail. C, accelerate at a rate of speed that causes the driver to lose control of the vehicle. D, accelerate at a rate of speed that constitutes a danger to other motorists or to pedestrians. E, use the vehicle horn for other than its intended purpose for warning other motorists or pedestrians as required by law. F, operate a motor vehicle at a speed while turning a corner to cause the tires to squeal. G, operate a motor vehicle in a manner that causes one or more wheels of the vehicle to leave the ground. H, operate a motor vehicle in a manner that tends to cause a disturbance. Section 2, this ordinance is sponsored by council representatives Ed Grundon and Rudy Schar. Section 3, any ordinance or part thereof that is inconsistent or in conflict herewith is hereby expressly repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Sorry, kids.
Sorry, kids. Well, I know this is probably a question for the chief, but doesn't a ticket for imprudent speed cover all of these?
It may. If a kid is just squealing his tires, though, they may not have the, all of the evidence of imprudent speed. There might be a way of doing it without that. Certainly, I would recommend, and I'm sure the police department will follow through with it, that if it's a motor vehicle violation, which is in Title 6, which is under the rules of the road and the state statutes, and you get points on your license and that, if they've got the elements to cite somebody for normal problems driving a motor vehicle that violates a traffic safety law, I would recommend that they do that, because then that impacts their driving record and puts points on their license. This is sort of outside the realm of that. This is all the ways that somebody can use their vehicle in a manner that creates a disturbance. So sometimes it would be motor vehicle typical law. Other times, it might be that they just don't have all of the elements of proof of a standard traffic citation. This would be like a tool in their toolbox that they could still cite them. Right now, when we do tire squealing, we try to do it with loud and unnecessary noise, that kind of stuff. And that really doesn't fit. A lot of municipalities go for this sort of catch-all. If we can't do it under the regular traffic rules, we'll do it disorderly conduct with a motor vehicle. There's less things that you have to prove. Certainly, somebody could fishtail for an entirely different reason. It could be the road was slippery, and maybe you were too fast for conditions. Unless it amounts to something where somebody's been placed in danger, it's not likely that the officers will pull somebody over just simply because their back end swerved a little bit for, when it's slippery conditions. But if somebody's purposely driving around to make their car fishtail, this would give them the tools to be able to give them a citation.
Yeah, come to my porch, sit on my porch and watch it after.
So, I just had one, maybe it's a question, I don't know. H. I'm trying to figure out who, who does it cause a disturbance to? And how can they, how do you justify that?
How do you measure that?
How do you measure it as a disturbance? Because one thing that disturbs me may not disturb somebody else. So would it be better that we don't have something like that in there?
That was requested specifically by the chief, so I added it. It goes along with what disorderly conduct is in the real world, where you're not dealing with, by a motor vehicle, that you can do all kinds of conduct that tends to create a disturbance, and it's always kind of in the eye of the beholder as to what would tend to create a disturbance and whatnot. Chances are, every one of these items, before you get to paragraph H, could tend to cause a disturbance. The H is sort of a catch-all if they can't quite fit it in. Certainly, it'll be something I would have to look at very closely as soon as somebody pleads not guilty and comes and talks to me about the ticket as to whether or not I believe that the court would find that it tends to cause a disturbance. If you're more comfortable with taking that paragraph out, I don't think that the intent of this ordinance will be harmed at all, because you've got specific conduct detailed in paragraphs A through G that you can point to a specific action, that you did this, so therefore you're in violation. H, I agree with you, is sort of subjective.
It's like a list, and at the end of the list, we put miscellaneous category.
Yeah, kind.
Other duties as assigned.
I, yeah. The issue is, is that, and I, we listened to him today explain how kids modify their cars today. And what you can do with these cars that historically you wouldn't have seen done, like they put in these air things and they blow air out of them, that blast onto something. And they change the air horn so that it screams something that, you know, creates a noise that's unusual. And they paint the cars so that they creates a noise that's unusual, and they paint the cars so that they create lighting conditions. There are all kinds of things that, you're not going to write every paragraph for, but really, they're creating hazardous conditions. And I think that was his intent, was is that instead of having to rewrite the ordinance every time, to be able to keep up with what these guys are doing these days is.
If anybody has a heartbreak, I'd recommend that we wait, call the chief in, have them, have them go, because I'm, I'm sure he put that in there for a reason, and I don't want to be guessing.
Right, at the same time, I wouldn't want to pass it with just, I agree with you, Rudy, but at the same time, I wouldn't want to pass it with just this miscellaneous catch-all. So I think we need the chief to.
Unless we have a good reason to, unless he has a good reason for it.
The chief should address this in the second reading.
Come sit on my porch when school lets out, you'll understand.
I have a question. When, if somebody, if the, if one of our, our police officers decides to give a warning or a ticket on this ordinance, would they give it by letter A, B, C, D?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, they would use H if whatever is the problem didn't fall in any other category, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And if it did fall under D, you would put down D on your ticket or something. I don't know how this works.
Correct, because.
Right, and it would have to be justified.
So.
He would have to put what, what was done, and, you know, and that's really up to the courts to decide.
Yeah, and I apologize, I wasn't there for that discussion this morning, because I was doing pre-trials. Somebody was trying to get me to believe that they didn't commit some other violations, so I didn't hear that conversation that the chief had. So, yeah, and those are probably warranted concerns, so maybe we can have the chief come at the next meeting.
So with counsel blessing, we'll move this to, leave it as it is, and move it to the second reading.
Right.
Mr. Scharr?
Yes.
Going back to resolution 1469, I was not comfortable with what I had said previously with those numbers, and I did go back and rework them.
Okay.
The amended number for stipends is the number that's incorrect, and every other number there is correct.
Hang on a minute, we've got to flip papers here.
Right.
Okay.
69?
Right.
Hang on. Okay, so what should it be?
The number for the stipends as amended should be 51,500.
And what's the first number starting out? Is 76 still the same number?
Right, right. So I verified that all of those adopted numbers are correct.
So what about the total number?
The total, 126,4 is correct.
Oh, so.
It was just the one number with stipends that got missed when the resolution was changed before it was sent to you.
Then Betsy, we were going off of 58,000, you're saying it's 51,5?
51,5.
Now we got to jump ahead two more, and we've got the wrong one there.
1471 was, if we're amending that one, we have to start with the 51,5 and change it to 41,5. I've worked those numbers through as well.
So can I ask counsel a question? So do we go back to that resolution and make a change?
I think we should, I think we should make another amendment.
Do we do 69 first and then the other one? Okay.
Yeah.
You'd probably want to do it in the same order in which you had done it originally, and maybe just to be correct according to the rules, probably somebody would want to make a motion to reconsider the original one, and then, and then if that is adopted, then you would make change to it.
So let me just.
So we have a motion to revisit.
I'll make a motion to reconsider resolution 1469.
And a second, please.
Second.
Okay, do we vote?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay.
Go ahead and call it, Misty.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Okay.
Okay, so now, do I have a motion to amend 14 dash 69 to read amended fire department stipends to 51,500, and subtotal 126,400 for both adopted and amended?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And I would ask, what are the figures now? Are the adopted now 76, the 5.4, and the 45 even? Do they remain the same?
Nothing changes.
That's correct. Those were correct numbers.
And then the 51,5, 23,4, and 51,5?
Right.
Okay.
Fine job.
Gee.
So it wasn't as wrong as we thought.
Let's see if you would.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Motion to revisit 40, resolution 1471.
I second.
Okay.
So the new numbers I have then for the fire department salaries and stipends, the adopted is 51,5, the amended is 41,5, and the total is 171,500 for both.
171,500.
Right.
171 or 170?
171.
Okay.
They still need to vote on the reconsideration, right?
Yeah. So let's call that, let's go ahead and do that one.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
And do I have a?
I make a motion to.
Let me.
You have to do an amendment?
Yeah, let's, yeah, I need an amendment for 14 dash 71 to read fire department salaries and stipends, 51,500 adopted, amended would be 41,500, and the total for both would be 171,500.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is that right?
That's right.
Misty, if you would, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
I have a question of counsel. How come we didn't have to make amendments when we just did what we just did?
We did.
Well, but if you move to amend, then you need to have a vote on the motion as amended.
We're still one vote to go yet.
You're right. You're absolutely correct.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to amend?
But we have to go back and do the other one, too.
To approve as amended.
I thought we did that one.
We only did the change.
Okay, let's, if we could backtrack.
To 1469.
14 dash 69.
Right, there we go.
I need a motion of adoption as amended.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Got it.
So, Mrs. Fritsch, and then Mr. Kerkovich.
Oh, my.
You got Misty all messed up.
Oh, my. Just for kicks, I'm going to make a motion to amend something else.
Betsy should buy her lunch. Yeah, yeah, you owe her lunch, Betsy.
Be happy to.
Okay, so roll call?
Yep.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
This brings us to resolution 14 dash 71.
I'll make a motion to, as amended, I make that motion.
And a second, please.
Second.
I think you owe her dinner, too.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Item nine, recommendations for future agendas.
Well, I believe Steve mentioned that the streetlights will be on our next agenda, and you have that on the new packet that you just had in front of you tonight. I did want to let you know that I attended the Public Works Board meeting, at which point they did a recommendation, and I did go down to see those lights, and I have pictures on my cell phone, so if you'd like to see them, you can, you know, I have those.
I should note, Diane, they don't make that one anymore. They do make one that's available on Maple Bluff that's just very similar, and I provided a diagram of that in tonight's memo.
Is that in here? Okay, I'll have to look at that. That's good.
And Maple Bluff is closer than Schlesberg, so if you guys are.
Been there and done that already, so, but we'll go do the other one, too.
The extensive memo on the streetlights, extensive memo on the wetlands, we probably want to do that, and the Klein property, we'll probably have to do that. Two of those probably should be in executive session, or at least one of them. So, and we do have several other items that will be on the agenda, including the request for the veterans' items on the building.
My recommendation is to make future agendas shorter.
I have, I would also like to ask that we have an agenda item to discuss the Brown's Court rebuild, because I would like to get clarification from my constituents and know what I'm talking about. And I just found out stuff tonight that I had no idea was going on, so if, don't need a vote or anything, but I would just like a chance to get that clarified.
As you know, we start doing our initial survey generally late October, early November. So everything that would be, you know, we're kind of picking up information and starting to weed through that. So I don't know that I'm going to be fully ready at the first meeting, maybe the second one.
That's fine, second is fine.
The first meeting, we probably will want to have the dam. I think that's on the agenda, right, Misty?
Yeah, okay.
Because that's an issue that we want to get, you know, we had those issues the council wanted to revisit on the dam construction before we sent it out for bids, and so those we need to get done. Because earlier, we get our projects out to bid, the better.
That's fine with me. Brown's Court isn't a matter of life and death, but I just would like to have a better understanding.
Just remind the council, I need the. Mo Scosh, if you would, please. You can email them to me, if you want to. Other than that, do I have a motion of adjournment?
I would just like to say that we would like to wish everybody happy holidays from the City Council, and.
I recommend happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas.
And whatever else there is out there, but may you all have a really good holiday season and be able to spend time with your family and friends, so.
And with that, I.
Thank you.